Make it through the snow, okay?
What's that?
I said you make it through the snow, okay?
I love the snow. I take snow every day.
All right, guys, we're live now.
Calling the Board of Selectmen meeting to order 7:00 PM November 2nd. Looks like we have all selectmen on board tonight. County Administrator, Special Guest Sherry Finn. So we'll get this meeting going. Announcements? Peter, what do you have for announcements tonight?
So, a couple of things, actually. There are some vacancies, I just want to announce the moderators looking for one person for the Capital Program Committee and one person to join the FinCon Finance Committee. So those are two important vacancies in the town. We still have Green Community vacancies. We'll be updating the list of vacancies there on the website once the county clerk agrees up after the work. So folks can see that. So, for example, in the Green Communities, I've got somebody interested, very excited about the individual, but we're trying to close the deal with them.
Peter, just a quick, can you speak a little bit louder?
Sure, so I'm trying this thing, I'll go back.
I can hear you a little bit better since you just moved that.
Yeah.
That's better.
This is better? Okay, I'll just go with this. So anyway, so Capital Program and Finance Committee, please contact the moderator if you're interested in those. Those are very important ones for the community. All the others are important, like I say, we'll update those on the website. Separately, you were just talking about the snow that you had. Brian Malali is going to be re-upping with most of the Plough folks that he used last year. They had all entered into agreements. We've been working with Brian just to finalize sort of an updated agreement, which is a modest few pages. Those should be available by the end of the week, once Brian's all settled. He'll be contacting folks on that. That's all I have otherwise on the announcements.
That's it, all you got?
Yep.
Okay. We've got two sets of meeting minutes here, October 5th and October 19th. Did everybody have a chance to review the meeting minutes?
Erica?
Yeah.
I did see that on questions on social media around voting tomorrow. I don't know if we want to let everyone, well, I can let everyone know that voting's tomorrow, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at St. Augustine's Church.
Yep.
Lincoln Street. So that was something I just seen on social media, people wondering where to vote and the time, so.
Okay. Thank you. And meeting minutes, did everybody have a chance to review them? Okay. Looking for motions on October 5th and October 19th?
There's actually an error in the October 19th meeting minutes.
Okay, so do you want to let us know what that is and then go with the motion?
Yes. So, on October 19th, the meeting minutes on page 2, right at the top, says Jennifer Dean Winks made a motion to appoint Mrs. Finn, and it was Jennifer Gill.
Okay.
I know when there's two Jennifers, things like that happen. So, I will make a motion to approve the minutes on October 5th, 2020, and October 19th, 2020, with the suggested changes.
Okay.
I have one, yeah, I have one other thing. For the October 5th minutes, an ever specifies when Miss Gill enters the meeting. I thought that might be useful to include. Actually, it wasn't in the beginning, but then she entered, so it might be just an interesting, useful part to include.
I can't remember if I was five minutes later or seven minutes.
It does say it. It says it after new business election warrant.
Yep.
It says roll call, and then it says Member Gill joined.
Okay.
Just had to turn the page.
Okay, so looking for a second on the motion.
So moved.
Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, I'll sign off on those two sets of meeting minutes and get down to Town Hall. Next item, correspondence. Peter, do you have any correspondence? Peter, can you hear us?
Unmuted, Pete.
I have none, yep, there you go. No, I have nothing, nope.
Okay. Departments, I don't think we have anybody from the Board of Health, but we did receive some information from the Board of Health. I think they sent over something late today. Peter, can you kind of briefly?
Sure, so I asked for, yep, I'd asked for an update from Sherry, who's the Assistant to the Board of Health as well. And so she summarized, we hit over the weekend case number 50 in Millville. So what that puts us, we, you know, she gave a spread by month of number of cases each month. So October, we had nine cases. September, we had two. There are three cases active, and they define active cases as cases within the last 14 days. I asked about, there was one known fatality, but that's not something officially reported by the health nurse. I don't really have any other data, but over the time, some of the data, we've seen a couple of instances, actually probably four instances, where you'll see multiple, there'll be multiples within a household of these 50 cases. But no real trends, no real pinpoint, something you can pinpoint. Separately, the Governor was very active today. Changing new COVID measures, new orders and advisories, basically. Multiple orders. One is a stay-at-home advisory, which basically says you cannot leave your house between 10:00 and 5:00 AM, except to go to work, except to go shopping for critical things, and taking a walk. Separately, he talked about, he ordered closing of businesses and activities, restaurants, bars, liquor stores, movie theaters and so forth. They must close by 9:30 PM. So we'll see how that all shakes out. He put in a face covering order, which at this point, regardless of social distance, you must wear a face mask in public places, which includes walking on streets and so forth. So that's something which is, the way I would describe it is, if in doubt, put one on when you go out. Next, they had a gatherings order, which I guess maybe I didn't read it closely before, I thought it was more guidance, but this is an order, and it's limiting, you know, home, private residences to 10 people or less. And, you know, you could have 10 or more if all lived within the household. Outdoor gatherings at private residences are limited to 25. There can be fines related to all of these types of things. It's unclear how and when those things will be actually enforced, how often and so forth. So the fines, as stipulated, are up to X dollars, and the X dollars is either $300 or $500, depending on the order that's being reached, if you will. So, pay more attention to that, if you're, you know, I think that's something worth looking at, paying attention to in Millville. And the Board of Health has a meeting, I guess, scheduled for Wednesday night. They'll be addressing these more specifically, and worth paying attention to that as time goes up. These go into effect on Friday at 12:01 AM.
Thank you. Just keep your eye on the news, watch the Board of Health meetings, and I'm sure there's going to be changes to come as the days go on. All right. That was it for Department's New Business. We have a resignation here of a police officer. I didn't see a note in my packet for the resignation date. Is it effective immediately, or?
It was effective October 6th, basically, which is, yeah, October 6th. So we're almost a month lag in terms of getting to you, but, you know, Robert Johnson resigned. He had a good experience with the Police Department, and working with everybody there. And he's just moving on and up, folks. So the chief's managing the absence by, with part-timers and efforts to recruit.
Looking for a motion to accept the resignation of Robert Johnson as of October 6th.
So moved.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, 5-0. Okay, Peter, we have the CARES Act Round 2 Submission Update.
Yeah, so I just want to include that, let you know what we did get in under the wire, had to go in by the end of last week. What we had submitted for, there's a summary page that basically says, based on what we've submitted in the first round and in this second round, we would have remaining amounts through the end of the year of about $83,000 of our initial $288,000 that we were granted as available, and we requested just over $200,000 in both rounds for a variety of things. We have not heard that officially from the state person who manages these things and reviews these, that all of the items that we've asked for, they would consider falls under the CARES Act and thus would release the funds. So, when that happens, I expect it should happen sometime this week. I did forward you all a brief email stream related to three of the items we had requested and the questions that the state person had, and I provided some additional background information for them. So, it remains to be seen. But the types of items that we, you know, included in our request included the previously approved by the Board, the BMR personnel amount of 25,000, we had 8,500 for BBT. We put in for emergency repairs for the ambulance for continuation of service, because arguably that can qualify. We put in fall town meeting, we put in Town Hall front doorway renovations that we're contemplating doing, which is really going from the ice cream window model outside the side of the building to a better ice cream window model at the front doorway, where we'll add additional enclosure to the existing breezer. That way, the inside door can remain closed, keep everybody safe and happy in the evening, and we'll just use the vestibule doorway as the ice cream window location. That's what we're currently thinking. And we put in funds for that. We're waiting an estimate for that type of non-permanent, non-structural, and hopefully temporary addition to the entry rate of the building. We have something in there for, you know, the Council on Aging to do. We were doing some outside events and so forth, so we provided some funds for that. We provided some funds for voting and staffing. We provided for some remote accessing capability that we think would qualify, and also some staffing needs. We've also put in the radios, which the state individual has some questions about, so it remains to be seen whether we get that, but we're asking for it. Likewise, a vehicle lift for the ambulance, which, you know, can be justifiable. It sounded like they were amenable for that, and we'll see. So, that's use of our CARES Act monies, which are scheduled to dry up at the end of December. If you don't use it, as we know it today, you lose it. Will that likely happen when they, you know, pick the timeframes for CARES Act funds available? You know, they were contemplating not such a lengthy challenge from the COVID pandemic. So, I guess it all remains to be seen what happens next.
Okay.
If that was, putting through these amounts to try and use it, not lose it, if you will.
Right. Some questions on some of the items, Peter?
Yep.
Go in the big long list, this one?
Yep.
Is, and I'm looking at, I know, I don't know if you could read that. So it's municipal program, Round 2 Application Form, and there's legal fees for $5,000. Are we expecting some legal fees? I guess I was just wondering what that was for.
Yeah, I have $5,000 in there. I'm trying to remember why I did that, actually. You know, some of the work that the Council has done for us arguably could be classified as COVID-19. So, for instance, even, you know, some of the readings of the Governor's rules that we had to adopt at the town meetings and so forth. So, we're going to reclassify some of the already billed and likely to be billed normal legal budgeted amounts to the COVID-19.
Okay. And then there's cleaning disinfection of public buildings, which is a few lines above that, and there was nothing put in there? Are cleaning supplies on a separate line item? I guess.
Yeah, the Board of Health gets some of these supplies separately. We've got some supplies free from the state. And that's not to say that we won't wind up spending for some and using CARES Act money, but if not in this request, we also have some left over from our first request.
Okay.
For that type of money.
And then my last question is on the lift for the ambulance, which you already mentioned. So I was wondering, is this the same lift that was requested last year from the Capital Program Committee?
Yes.
Okay. And then, because we've talked about our ambulance has been aging, so if we were to invest this money, would that lift be transferable to a new ambulance as well? Okay.
Yes, yes. But it does precipitate the broader discussion, and the chief and I have gone back and forth about that, the long-term play, and whether, you know, this might precipitate looking more closely at a new ambulance and/or what we do with the service.
Yep. Okay, I just, it's not small money, so if we were to.
No, it's not.
I didn't know what was happening with the ambulance either, I just wanted to make sure we could use it again, if, depending on the situation.
That's right.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments on CARES Act?
I just have a question on the next piece. So we have $83,000 left.
Right.
Do we expect that we're going to be able to use those funds?
So those become usable as needed, basically. So we would, if something wasn't requested in Round 1 and 2, and/or we've used up all the monies we requested under Round 1 and 2 for whatever reason, and we need CARES Act monies to spend, and spend it, it's deficit spending, in essence. You know, then they'll grant us, they will request the money by proving what we spent it on.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
On to old business. We have Mr. Finn with us to discuss stipends and white paper. I'm not sure if everybody has had a chance to go through the packet that was attached in our folders. It is lengthy, so hopefully you all read it, and I'm sure Sherry can give us a brief synopsis from beginning to end of the white paper, the reason for the white paper, and where we stand now.
Thank you. Just wanted to check, did everybody in fact have a chance to read and review this?
Yes.
Yes, Jen, you did, Andrew, you did?
Yep.
Andy, you did too? Okay, good. Just wanted to check, Kevin?
Yes.
I think, I did this as a matter back in July 13th, and I did it and asked that Erica would send that out to you folks prior to this meeting in advance, so that you would have the update as to what has, what did take place up until that time, and use a white paper format. I think you're all pretty familiar with a white paper. So, these are facts, these aren't biased facts, they're facts. And I just wanted to make sure that if anybody had any concerns or questions about the white paper that indeed, I guess now from what understanding you've all read, then I would like to entertain that if indeed they had any questions. So, do we have any questions that we could entertain based on the white paper of July 13th? And I will then give you an update from that July 13th date to current as to what's transpired. Anybody have any questions?
I have just a comment. It seems, so I read the white paper and I highlighted on the last page above your signature, at the top of the large quote, it says, "Therefore, in the future, the district will submit the warrant item to both towns, but the boss in each town chooses to do will depend on that current Board of Selectmen." So, it seems like you're suggesting that the school district, the school committee, will submit a warrant article for stipends for the school, and then we would put that on the annual town meeting warrant for the townspeople to vote? Is that your goal?
No, that, I think if you read that, that's all in quotes.
Yeah.
And that quote is actually from Jane.
Jane, yeah.
Okay, so it's not my quote. I'm not here to advocate for the BMR and how you folks want to determine it. That will be between you folks and BMR. I'm here specifically to speak to the BBT piece of it, which differs from the BMR piece of it. And to give you, and to give Jane courtesy, when I said, before I sent this out on the July 13th, and I asked her for opinion on it as professional courtesy, she gave it to me. So what I thought I would do, I said, "Don't mind, I'm going to quote what you've sent me." She said, "Not a problem." So I have taken there from the "therefore" down to the committee itself. In that paragraph is basically what Jane's thoughts are in this.
Yep.
So it, I'm not advocating for or against it, that's her thoughts, and you folks are going to have to unravel that ballie on when she determines to get to that point. Fair enough?
Yes, and in the spirit of that quote, so then you would be asking for a warrant article for yours, for the.
I would prefer, I would prefer that I'm going to give you a couple options.
Okay.
But I thought it would be more important to give you the base facts first, which you've got. Give an opinion of someone that has a different view on it, which is Jane, and at the same timeframe, be able to give you an update on what she had written to this date, so we know what has transpired since the July 13th white paper came out.
Okay.
That fair? So it's a sequence of things that have taken place, so we keep in some chronology of order, okay? All right, so, with everybody who has read this now. Who's another question?
Yeah, Sherry, if I could. On the top of page 2, you have one line there, because we're talking about fact. It says the BMR School Committee stipends were not included in the BMR school budget. That's inaccurate, and I think Jane speaks to that in her comments as well. You know, the stipends are included in the BMR budget. That's the distinction between BMR and GCT's treatment of stipends. Secondly, in Jane's first sentence on that third page, she had had the superintendent contact legal counsel. So I've heard what BMR's legal counsel said. I've requested to see what legal counsel has said over there, but I've not been able to get it. So I just say that, you know, I hear things, I like to see things. And I've shared with the Board here what our counsel said on this. I don't think anybody's trying to die in a sword on this one by any means in terms of having a warrant article for the BMR piece of it, which, as you state, is not what you're here to discuss anyway. So, that's all I wanted to say on that.
Yep, well, I hear what you're saying, that'd be something I guess you'd need to take up with Jane on that. The two updates that I'll give you from the original July 13th, and I'll tell you after, one of them was Jane's response that Jason DeFalcio did not submit Article Number 5. It states clearly there, if you look at, if you look at the actual Article Number 5 in your listing, you'll see that it says Jason DeFalcio, although fairly enough, we say never, he said he never put it into play. So, the town voted for it, as if he did. The Finance Committee agreed to it that way, and the Board of Selectmen did, and they voted that way. That's their issue, they can take that up and do what they wish. It looks as though there might have been a miscommunication there. And in talking to Jane, she was quite adamant that Mr. DeFalcio did not do that. My purpose of doing the white paper on that was to say that it would be very much of suspect to be able to have the superintendent, who basically reports to the school committee, who then reports to the citizens, to have the superintendent be saying what the amount of stipend should be for the people that he reports to. That makes no sense. But that's for them to decipher. I just wanted to tell you what Jane had told me on that, and the remedy on that thing she'll have to come up with for you folks as to making.
Can I just speak on that, Sherry?
Yeah.
I know years ago, all of the stipends were on both towns' annual town meeting. Millville did move away from them, because BMR put them as a line item. Blackstone at the time said that they were going to continue to leave that as an actual article, even though it was included in the budget. So I'm wondering if this is kind of one of those articles, their Article 5 is one of those ones that just is a format. They keep it there year after year, and it's probably never even submitted.
I can't answer that.
Yeah, that's the only thing I can.
I hear what you're saying. I know that we had a change in super tendency a number of times, and it appears the name has changed, so someone must have looked at it to change it. At the same timeframe, I, again, I'm not here to talk about the BMR piece.
Right.
That's you folks are going to have to decipher that one yourself, okay? I am here to tell you that that's, Jane said, "Mr. DeFalcio did not do that," I believe what she said. You folks are going to have to spend that out yourself. The other item that she mentioned, I had put in the white paper concerning the Vice Chair position. They do have a Vice Chair, that's Aaron Fanaco. The way that they redlined it in the change is because it's going to be Chair Person and not Chair Men. So, that was the change on that. So, of the argument, of the two distinct differences between what the facts have, were reported out at that time, those are two things that have been updated since that July 13th white paper went out. So I hope that clarifies. Any question on either one of those two items? If you've got any other further comments on that, you'd have to take it up with Jane. Now, to answer Peter's question. Peter had said the people in Blackstone had decided that they needed to do it by a warrant item, and that's what we just talked about. The idea of the attorney, I guess, from Millville, was that that was a tacit agreement within the budget. If you look at, and I think I've given all of you, the, what is it? It'd be the relevant MGL law, prevailing statute, MGL Chapter 71, Section 52. It's attachment number 6 in your package. If you look at that, it is fairly clear there, and has been looked at a number of different ways by different people, that it is by a majority vote of the voting member towns authorized at their respective town meetings. That's pretty clear. So if that's the case, it's another thing for you to ponder. It is a MGL Chapter 71, Section 52. You can look at that, you can interpret it any way you want. We have had it interpreted, and the interpretation of that basically comes down to, it's, let's see. It says here, "The problem with this is including it in the budget is that your budget is a bottom-line figure, say X amount for the fund, for say BMR, BBT, whatever. So although you might include as a proposed stipend in the budget when you're building it, ultimately, the school committee would be deciding the amount of its own stipend, which is totally at odds with Section 52 of the MGL." So that's, that's the argument there. Again, that's, I'm just doing the, giving you the information. You folks are going to have to determine what you want to do with it. But we've got it here as it is, it's not a violation, it's just, it's not in the same orbit, if you must, to put it into your budget, because the people from one town or the other don't get a chance to vote on it according to the MGL Chapter 71, Section 52. You're going to have to read that and determine that yourselves, but I did want to give you a viewpoint on it. Now, my only part of this is to be looking at this in terms of it being, well, what are the options? If, you know, last time we went through a situation where it was on the town floor, there was some passionate speeches on both sides of the equation, and it was finally settled out by the, by the citizenry. And so be it, that's democracy, if you believe in this to its form. As Jen had said a minute ago, it was never that way before. It was either in a situation where it was a line item. And if you were to look at the idea of a line item, it would be, let's see, attachment number 3. If you look at that, you will see the town of Blackstone. You can see that they have it there as a salary stipend total and a budget line. The idea of that is you have an operating budget that's requested by the school committee. You have a, any type of debt service you would have when we built the expansion some 16 years ago. There's a debt service that Millville's required to pay. Those are two specific operating and debt service totals. They should be total totaled, so people clearly and concisely understand what they're voting on there, as a line item. As you look at the stipend. As you look at the stipend, as it says for the BV, BV, BBT person, member stipend in attachment number three, you see it's a salary or a stipend total, and then it totals to that budget line. That's it. So for instance, line 255 on the Millville budget, you would end up putting that in there as the stipend for the BBT rep, and it would be 1,500, 1,800, whatever it's going to be. That's up to you folks to decide, not I. Then it would go to the operating side of it, which is how much is required by the town, your fair share of the 13-town consortium. And then the last part of it would be any debt service from the 13 towns. And it would go to a total for that operating. So there would be different subtotals for that. That way there, when you get to the town meeting, if there's a hold on line number five, 255, people can have a right to hold that if they wish to do so and speak their piece concerning Jane. That's the way it was always done before, before it magically disappeared when they disappeared all the stipends that were done by the elected, not, not the people that are appointed. The elected people were the ones that were, the stipends were for. And that those folks, myself included, were erased at a midnight move from the previous administration. So you get two options. You can do it by putting it in a line item, have it clearly visible, have it so it's seamless, so people can see what it is, know what it's for, know it's not buried in the, in the budget, know it's not buried into the debt service, know it's not buried into anything other than the fact it is what it is. And that is for the stipend. Now, you can either vote for or against it, that's really up to you folks. Now, so that's one option. The second option is the ones that I've investigated. The section, second option happens to be, you present a separate article. I think Jen, that's what you were talking about earlier. If you look at, you see attachment number one, Article Number Five. And within that one there, you can see that the folks at, at Blackstone had put in as a separate article. And they're putting it in as an article, although this question, do they have the right as the district to put it in as an, as what the Millville people are going to be okay with? Or should it be broken out so there'd be one as Jane recommended for Blackstone, and whatever it might be, and then one for Millville and allow the two towns to vote on it? That's up to you folks and how you want to handle that if she spelled out in her dissertation. What I would look for would be maybe revised language, and I'm not a lawyer, nor do I tend to be, but something to the order of this that says, "To see if the town will vote to authorize the at-large, duly elected, duly elected member of the BBT regional high school to be compensated for his or her services, and to set the amount of said compensation at $500, $1,500 for member, $1,800 for leadership position as defined by chairperson or vice chairperson." Also, the attendance requirement, which I always had in there, which for some reason disappeared, my attendance requirement's 75%. I think if you're serious about helping out the children of this community, you need to make sure that you're not only there occasionally, you have to be there and make a commitment. That's what I've done over 30 years. 75% should be the threshold. I'm not in favor of 60. That's an occasional show. So that's why I put in that type of language. And I'm, I'm not saying I'm going to fall my sword on this, I'm just trying to explain my positioning. From a BBT standpoint, I want it to be something that is in fact transparent to the people very easily, by line item or by warrant. I want something that is in compliance with MGL. It says you have to have a town vote. So I'm saying I'd like the town vote, because that's what MGL says. I'd like to have it transparent so people can see it. Your choice is whether you want to put it in a warrant item or you want to put it in a line item, we just put it in the regular budget. But regardless, I think we have to be in compliance with MGL. So I don't know how long that took, Jen, on your stopwatch, but I hope it kind of gave you a synopsis as quick as I could do it. No, I just, I'm just trying to be as fair and equitable to bring you all up to date, give you the information as best as I can. I told the people when we had the meeting in July, or actually August, I think it was, over at BMR, that I would do some investigation to see whether or not it is legal, according to the legal beagles, to be able to use it as a budget where one town is basically telling the other town, you've got to pay some amount of budget. Pretty clear in the MGL that it says, no, it has to be voted both towns. So that's my, that's my point to you, and for that, I'll, that's my case. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question. Thank you for all this information, first of all. So a couple of questions. First, BBT, 13 towns, is the budget presented the same to every town with having the stipend separately lined out in their budget request? That's done by BMR?
Yeah, we intentionally did that years ago, way before I got there. They intentionally did that because they wanted home rule. The people of the hometown should vote on it, not, not the district.
Right.
And MGL acclaims the same thing.
So you're not advocating for any change on BBT's budget submissions?
I'm only advocating if you want, either put it in a warrant, or if you want, you put it in a line, just put it in there, like I said, a line, whatever it was, 255, put it in there where it says stipend 1,500, whatever, and then it says total stipend 1,500. And you move to the, the next two categories, which is debt service and also the amount of monies that the town would have to pay as part of the membership. Well, each one of them is separate in its own line. You, you're not supposed to combine them according to MGL.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep, absolutely. That's all I had for my questions. Anybody else have questions?
Nope.
Jerry, thank you for doing all the legwork.
Well, I'm not trying to be difficult. I am not trying to be anything other than fair. I think the town has an obligation to tell the people what the monies are for. People have the right to vote on it. And I also think that it's a situation where you have to be in compliance with the MGL. I mean, and it's pretty clear there. I won't go into it, but there's two other stipulations that go into it, which I also have. That's Chapter 41, Section 108 for compensation, and it's Chapter 41, 108A, which also classifies positions. There was one last thing I'd like to say on this, if there's no other questions regarding that. There is a, and I'd like to give you a viewpoint that there are in the MGL law. It talks about there's no compensation for the school committee unless the people vote for it. So there are other towns in Massachusetts, 350 different cities that have low compensation for a regional... There is, some of them do nothing. There are other ones that pay up, in the BBT example, just wants to pay up to $3,000 for a member. You know, you get into Milford and some bigger towns, obviously they can, they can, they look at, that is not a big deal. But Millville, it's a, it's a big deal. I just want to be consistent, I want to be within the compliance of the law, and I hope that this gives you where I'm coming from. And I'd like to make sure that we follow up on this, because I don't want to go through this again, I really don't. I'd like to have it settled, figure out what it is, what do you want to do next, next budget cycle? This is how we're going to do it. Let's get it over with, there's a hell of a lot more important things in the freaking site. And I, I just think that that'd be the best way to move forward on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Leaving, seeing none. Turn it back, Erica, thank you.
But I guess, the only question I, I have, I guess, with the Board of Selectmen is how do we act on this moving forward?
So my, my recommendation would be, obviously, we give a heads up to the school department, the school committee, to say, we're going to be asking for some changes. We're going to be asking that you prove that your stipend within the budget as you have it now is legal. If not, we need to follow the letter of the law first and foremost. And secondly, going to see, you know, I think the townspeople would appreciate seeing the stipend outside of the budget, because that's how they see every other stipend within the town.
I agree.
So I think a heads up to the school committee to let them know when they're submitting their budget, we're going to be asking for some additional information, possibly change.
Actually, when you look at the 19 compensation for all the people, the 99 lines that are in there, there's nobody from the school committee in there. That's because it was in the budget. I, I just don't know if that's really the right way to do it. That's up to you folks. I just want to do what's right for BBT and for my positioning on it. And I alert you to the fact of what I have found out as I was going through this process.
And I think, Erica and Peter, do you agree we probably have to go to town council and say, what exactly, should we just do the line item? Do we need the warrants? Should we do both?
I think we may even have some information already, if not, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, have we reached out to town council on this previously?
Well, yeah, just in terms of what we looked at before, in terms of the need for the warrant article, and whether we've approved it or not, as we've talked about before. So yes, you know, Jerry's interpreting, you know, the Mass General Law. We think town council will do that. They haven't raised any challenges the way that Millville, you know, as the person responsible for bringing the budget to the Board of Selectmen, which is also the budget goes to the finance committee, even though it's detailed and fairly granular. So yes, it's not breaking out as a separate hold and vote item, because Millville does it by department, does each budget by department, includes salary and expenses by department. This would be a change, which Jerry's suggesting, from that past practice. I'm not saying whether that's right or wrong. In terms of, you know, the fundamental difference between BBT and BMR, you know, where BMR has it baked into their budget, and Millville gets its percentage assessment of whatever the cost of those stipends are that are in the full budget. A separate breakout might be a greater cost to the Millville taxpayers if you're allocating equally four and four, some such thing. You know, that would certainly be something that you'd have to talk about. You know, and yes, I agree with Selectmen weighing on the, you know, this is, the, the article that Blackstone does, I have no doubt is one of, having put the, you know, the warrant articles together for the town of Millville here a few times, you have a whole bunch of standing boilerplate ones, and you know, don't even look at who, you know, who, who put it forward. That, that strikes me as a boilerplate one. But all these things are worth exploring further, because Jerry's raised some, you know, points of things that are confusing and could benefit by some clarity. The council comes in. But again, I would like to see BMR's councils weigh in on all of this as well.
The, the only other thing I can mention that, Pete, is that when we talked about that in August, there was a concern that was brought up at that time by one of the members of the BMR school committee, who, Tammy, I think it was, who said that that should be something that Millville should invest in, that she didn't think it was up to them to invest in it. So because I didn't think Millville wouldn't have the money nor individually the ambition to invest in it, and because the BMR, at least from Tammy's point of view, didn't seem like that, that she wanted to have their funds go towards it, I, I told people that I would use the resources that I could through the good offices of Dr. Fitzpatrick, through his Mars Association, through all the school committee memberships and things that he's involved in. And even with all that, we still got a legal opinion. And the legal opinion came from Worcester, and the legal opinion is what I've read to you concerning that it has to be accounted to a vote of two towns. And not my issue, I'm just going to tell you that it's not Jerry Finn who's saying this. It is officially a legal opinion that came from a lawyer. So want to go ahead and spend more money, go find another one. By all means, go ahead, I'm just telling you.
Yeah, and so I...
You had one one way, you had one the other way, and I'm just giving it one third way, which I said I would, so I did.
I'm just looking for what the BMR lawyer said in the past. I'm not suggesting anybody spends any additional money.
Yeah.
It's represented, they've already scored this, and their council has opined on it, I'd just like to see that.
Yep. Fair enough. I just want to make sure you understood that it wasn't my interpretation, it was indeed the folks that, that I told everybody in August I would use, and I did. Be it Doc and his offices, and actually the legal council. Okay, any other questions?
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you very much.
All right, next subject, Peter's favorite subject, MS water treatment. You have an update for us on the Mass DEP requirements?
Sure. So sorry for the lack of a 19-minute meeting here. But I included in your packet some things, just so you can appreciate, you know, you see the public water system survey that, you know, was generated by Mass DEP, and then some responses with time frames to certain action items, just as some background for you to look at. So things are happening there, there were some, you know, violations, as they call them, and some deficiencies. There's some clarity of fact by a water operator to some of the things they said. What I really wanted to get you to was actually towards the back, one of the things they required, there's a memo from the water operator for our required, kind of like I say, some of their citations. They, the Mass DEP had some incorrect facts upon which they were making some of these requirements and citations. But towards the back there, you'll see there's an invoice, and the page before the invoice is Section 15 Plan Approval. This is the emergency action plan that was required and updated by Mass DEP, and I was required to sign off on it. And so you see I put in some conditions or some clarification for what I was signing. And basically, I'm saying, you know, the facts that they use on which the Mass DEP based all of this survey and citations was, number one, they say the population served is 575. That is way off, the only population is 250. The other thing is the population is being served in a pre-COVID environment, only about 180 days a year, and only five days per week, about 35 hours per week. And that said, the water that is being treated, none of it's being used for drinking water, none of it. It's very limited hand washing, it's very limited food preparation. And yes, you're flushing toilets with it, but you don't need treated water. So I, I feel what I saw, you know, just to be a pain in the neck to the Mass DEP a little bit, I guess, is the way I would say it. Just joking. But it leads to the point, you can see in the latest invoice that we got from them, which is from our water operator, it's six, over 16,000 bucks. And our budget is basically $12,000 per quarter. This is for a quarter, and it has additional charges for activities that have to do with satisfying the requirements of Mass DEP testing and servicing and so forth. So we, we're going to exceed the budget as put forth if we pay this invoice. Which leads to the bigger discussion, which is, I'm not looking for action tonight, but I want you to think about how to go forward, because I've raised this before. Under our existing agreements and under the agreement that was approved with town meeting that has changed to the regional agreement, you know, this falls under the threshold of a capital item. And the town is only responsible for capital items, and that's us at $25,000. This is an operating expense cost. And so past practice has not been to put that burden of that cost on BMR. It's not budgeted by BMR. But it is the legal documents, if you follow them to the, the black and white of the legal documents that the town is subject to and BMR is subject to, it is an operating expense. If you look at the elementary schools in Blackstone, they're provided public water by the Blackstone Water System Supply, and the schools are invoiced, and those invoices are paid for by BMR. So it's an inconsistent treatment. So the question is whether or not the town wants to draw a line in the sand at some point, and this large bill kind of forces the conversation. So I put that forward to you all for some future thought. Certainly happy to discuss briefly here, but there's a lot of effort going into cleaning up the water over there that nobody's drinking. You know, you could, you could think about pulling off the, the black bags that cover up the buggers over there. I mean, it's our building, we can do that, the water's... Anyway, that's food for thought. That's, I have asked, I will be meeting with Mike Soder to talk about dealing with Mass DEP and his assistants. He's ready, willing, and able to do that, I want to do that after the election.
Good.
Let's see where it goes.
Yeah, I would be, yeah, I would be interested, once you meet with Mike, or maybe even before our next meeting, to get a kind of a, what we've spent on this in the last two years, three years in total. I know it fluctuates a bit, but I know it's been pretty expensive, but I'd be curious to know what we spent on trying to clean up this water over there. We can get a total on that, just to give some, give some people what, what the transparency we need. So I don't think a lot of the townspeople realize how much we're really spending on this water that's essentially not being used.
Right.
Kind of being forced by the Mass DEP to have this water at a certain level, and then we're not even using it. It's really wasting the money.
Right. Okay.
Is, like, because I'm reading through the report, and there are, sorry, Erica, did you have more?
Oh, I'm good.
Interrupted. Okay, I'm sorry.
No worries.
So I was looking at, like, citation seven, for example, it says perchlorate has been detected in the water at Constitution, approaching the MCL limit of two, I don't remember what UGs are per liter. Um, so there are some numbers here that, that are approaching limits and things like that, so would that make it not drinkable?
I'm done.
Hey, Jerry, we can all hear you.
Jerry, you're on live.
I'm not anymore. Let me get off.
So, uh, they asked for a corrective action plan by the operator. And it said October first, the operator got an extension, um, on that sort of thing. So there would be, you know, uh, I don't know, he didn't touch on it in his write-up here, but he did in some other ver, yeah, write-up that I have, uh, address that briefly. But so those types of things, sure, there's a corrective action plan. Weeks, you know, he can explain some of the, uh, reasons for whatever the trends might be and how they're dealing with. Typically does that, and his, in their response to Mass DEP on our, yeah.
Hmm, okay. I guess, because I, I know we've spent a lot of money on this, and so can we get to a point where this water is drinkable?
It is.
It is? Okay. Well, just because I see those numbers approaching certain levels, I don't know if that means it's not drinkable, or that's like the warning area. I don't know what the limitations are for cert, for the chemicals that are listed here. Um, so once it gets, so it's drinkable now?
Uh huh.
And are there concerns that the makeup of certain chemicals in the water will deviate from drinking and how we're controlling that?
Yeah, the, the primary challenge has been, um, uh, dealing with the iron and manganese in the water. And to do that, they put in a version of salt. If you have a water treatment in your home, you probably deal with something similar.
Very familiar.
Yeah, really has been a very high, uh, challenging, uh, balance of the, the amount of sodium, if you will, sodium chloride that you put in, uh, and managing the disinfectant byproducts, as they're called. And it's the disinfectant byproducts that, that we, the town has been dinged on in the past. Um, and it's hard to do that when you have no usage and/or you have, you know, summer vacations and/or you have a, a COVID environment where the facility isn't really working the water. And so now you have a, I don't know what the size of the tank, it's fairly substantial, and you've got twenty-five-hundred gallon tanks sitting there with water in it for two weeks, hardly used. And, you know, the tank surface basically can impact the, you know, the, that sort of. But, you know, it might behoove us to have Bob Ferrari come in and give a brief explanation of the latest and greatest on this, because you really, he can provide a nice tutorial, um, that would benefit folks.
Yeah, I think, I think that would make sense. And then, because I read the things about, you know, that summer vacation, the water gets held, and like you were talking now, Peter, you know, kids just aren't drinking the water, just from a COVID perspective, nothing to even, you know, they own kids on bubblers, which I totally get. But I was wondering if we should have, like, a flushing schedule or something like that, that might help with things and.
Well, the, the, you know, the, uh, Matt, I think his name is now, and Greenie before, you know, they all went around and did flush, they did run the water. They, they were pretty, uh, you know, good about doing that. So it's just keeping the water flowing as best they could every day, frankly. And they're part of the process, the, you know, the young fellow Matt now is doing a good job, but, uh, it still is challenging. The, the other part that I think is worth, uh, that concerns me more than, maybe more than anything, is that they, they clean the green sand filters by backwashing them. And so all of the salt that you put in is then backwashed and put out into a, they call it underground injection control system where the plants are. So you have that, the, the disinfecting products, if you will, and the byproducts being flushed into the ground. And it's in an approved, um, underground system, but I, I would worry about that if I was downhill from there, I guess.
Hmm.
I saw what was in mind. So that's something that, that I don't see Mass DEP too concerned about. It seems to me that would be one, it should be. I don't mean to alarm anybody, but it is reality. So I think getting Bob Ferrari in, uh, here and, um, you know, having a conversation with, uh, Mike Soder and how he might be able to facilitate a, a more reasonable approach to what we're doing there, given the usage, which is limited at best and unlikely to be driven. And separately, what you all might want to consider in terms of, uh, the cost burden.
Hmm.
And by whom.
Right. So we'll hear back from you, Peter, uh,
Yes.
after you consult or make a meeting with, um, Mike Soder. Um, if Bob Ferrari can come and give us an, uh, a little explanation, that might be helpful, may have better, more questions for him. And then also, I'd like to get a run rate on this operating cost over the last two to three years, because it truly is an operating cost that the town is bearing, and that's, um, that's not the way the contracts are set up, so.
That's right. And I, you know, I consulted with, uh, council on that as well, just the interpretation of the existing agreements as well as the new agreement. It's the town's council that he confirms with. It is, uh, classified as, it is an offering.
Madam Chair, just be aware, um, if you have Mr. Ferrari come in, he typically does not give small presentations. He is a wealth of knowledge. He knows his stuff. And he will, um, he gives a lengthy, thorough presentation.
That's, that's a good thing.
It is.
So we won't have him and Jerry on the same night? Is that what you're saying?
I'm just saying, plan accordingly. Make it a, make it a twenty-minute meeting night with Mr. Ferrari.
Right, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions on this item or comments before we move on? Next item is, uh, bill payment. Was that part of the, uh, Mass DEP that you were speaking of, Peter, or is that, et cetera?
Yes, that was, uh, that's the invoice, talking about the invoice and, uh.
All right, Alex, do we have anybody in, uh, public forum tonight?
Let me check real quick.
Thanks.
Nope, no comments.
All right, if somebody comes in in the next couple of minutes, let us know, please.
Sure.
Selectmen's reports. Any of the selectmen have anything for discussion tonight?
I have a, just a very brief, uh, update or announcement, if you will. Um, so, uh, the American Legion Post four eleven, um, uh, through the hard work, actually, of Jeff Wing has, uh, and the generosity of, uh, Senator Ryan Fatman has, uh, acquired, uh, new flags for the town to replace some of them that are, are tattered and they need to be done. So I, I would just like to thank, uh, Jeff for spearheading that and, uh, Senator Fatman for, uh, stepping up to the plate.
Thank you. Good update. Anyone else?
Yeah, I have a quick, um, more of a thought than anything. Um, earlier this meeting, we voted on the resignation of a police officer. But from my recollection, our police chief is a strong, is considered a strong police chief. So we don't actually have any say on when we do that vote, so, right?
So I can jump in. Our police chief is not a strong chief. Our fire chief is. So as his role as a fire chief, he appoints and runs that department, but he does not have that same, um, authority in the police department.
Any other questions or comments? Any other selectmen's, uh, reports?
Nope.
Peter, back to you.
Okay, I'll be quick. Uh, the tank in the ground is mostly underground over there. They've been using two temporary tanks hooked up to the heating system, so there's neither MES. Um, so that's moving along okay with a few fits and starts here and there, but, uh, I think they're they're managing and, uh, you know, MES is moving. Uh, the audit.
Can you speak up just a little bit? Can you speak a little bit louder? Thanks.
Okay. Um, so just saying about the tanks and MES, they're all, uh, moving along.
We're now on talking about propane tanks, not water tanks.
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, the audit, we have, uh, four, uh, open items that are due to the auditors, and then they'll be providing a draft. Uh, those are to come from the treasurer collective. I got the updated list today. Um, so that's being worked on. Um, Capitol Program Committee, we're meeting next week. Just a reminder to departments, I think, I forget when the deadline is. I got a couple of things I got to get off my butt to get in.
You missed the deadline.
Before the chair gets after me, right?
So, um, this weekend is when I'm pulling all the surveys and all that, so if you get it in by Friday, because I'm probably not going to have time.
I'm, I'm tuned for tomorrow, but, uh,
Okay.
Just a couple of items that I put out for grant, but I think I'll put them in anyway, just.
Yeah, just that are safe and sorry.
That's right. Um, as, as you mentioned, the voting's tomorrow, so I just want to, you know, say good things and thanks to the folks that are going to be manning the polls tomorrow. You know, you've got some great people who've lived in Millville forever. And I, I, you know, I plan to get over there to see them all socially distanced and all that sort of thing, but, uh, you know, they work hard and, uh, they're going to be there for folks in the board, so kudos to them. The other thing is just, you know, once again, I can't say it enough, the Millville staff in the Navy Department have really been able to provide, continue to provide services without much complaint or interruption in service levels at all levels, in spite of COVID nineteen, in spite of restricted, you know, uh, hours and access and all of that. And likewise, the residents have been, you know, phenomenal in all of this, because I think they've adapted pretty well. It's a, it's a pretty neat thing to see, and I, you know, as an outsider to your community, I hope you're, you're proud of all of each other there, because it's, uh, it's done well. Um, I mentioned the, uh, the, the ice cream window. Uh, I, I hope before it gets too cold, we'll have done, uh, revised entry using the CARES Act monies. So we'll make it easier and more comfortable in the cold months where people come up to the window and deal with billing inspection, uh, business, uh, town court business, treasurer collective business, you name it, the border health business and so forth. Um, on the marijuana front, um, I heard from Cassie today that she submitted her, uh, applications to the Columbus Control Commission, and she thinks it's a ninety-day window of approval for her for a provisional license. We'll see. Um, the other guys I was in last week with Garden Wonders, I got inside. Uh, it is a great setup. Uh, I think it's going to be a nice retail environment, and we're waiting for their final license from Columbus Control. So, you know, at some point, you'll start seeing some, uh, uh, activity over there. Maybe even before the end of the year, and the town will be seeing it's three percent. And the town did adopt a local option, so there's a three percent sales tax and proper reactivity, reducing to the license fees. So it's, uh, going to be good. That's all I had to say.
That's that?
Yep.
All right. Uh, any items not recently anticipated, the last forty-eight hours? Anybody? No?
Nope.
All right, so I will sign the meeting minutes of October fifth and October nineteenth. And just a last reminder, get out and vote tomorrow, St. Augustine's, seven AM to eight PM, I believe the polls are open. And I want to say thank you to, uh, everyone that helped out with early voting and mail-in voting. I know it was helpful for a lot of people. There's some extra hours put in by our staff, so thank you. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is Monday, November sixteenth.
Make a motion. Make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Looking for a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Andrew? I see frozen there.
He's frozen.
We'll say four, zero, one. So, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Night.